Time starts to start. We need the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 7th. First order of business is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chanson?
Here.
Salvati? Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone? And McFadden?
Here.
You have the necessary corner to conduct business. Reminder would be to please speak into the microphone for BATV so that everybody can hear it and it can be recorded properly. Okay, thank you. Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything?
No.
Okay. Onto number four, matters from the public.
Must be you guys are up here. The mic's over, nobody's gonna be sitting there.
You think it's a budget meeting? They've taken the oath. Okay. Right on to the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of one item, January, February, March 2019 city council reports.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number six, Resolution 19-61-R authorizing execution of certified community form for exempted properties to be included in the June 1st, 2019 King County stormwater ordinance update.
That'll be true.
Hello? Hello. Are you gonna summarize it, or you want me just to go for it?
Why don't you summarize it and also introduce yourself so that the new members will know who you are?
Okay. Andrea, oh, excuse me. Andrea Pedraza, Assistant City Engineer. And I'm here to present the upcoming revisions to the King County stormwater ordinance, a portion of it. I've sat on the technical advisory committee with Rahat for the last almost two years. And we've gone through the ordinance and updated it based on some things that we found to be not consistent or clear for different communities and things that we felt would be bettering the area in general. There were members from other municipalities on this committee, developers, farmers, the people from the ag committee as well. So it incorporated a general consensus of King County employees and, I guess you would say, business residents. So as of June 1st, 2019, they're gonna be adopting the new ordinance. While I was at a seminar this afternoon, Jody Wolnick, who is the department, the director of the environmental and water resources at the county, sent an email with the latest updated ordinance that will be provided to us. And as part of that, we have to provide a list of properties if we want them to be on the exempt list. What that means is currently, there may be some developments that are in discussions with different municipalities and spending a lot of time, effort, and money in developing that property following the current ordinance. So in order to be exempt, you would then submit to the municipality and they would determine whether or not you've met a criteria where you would kind of lock in, you know, like if you're looking at interest rates, you're locking in at that rate today. So that's kind of what we're, this exempt list is, you're locking in at what the conditions are in the current 2002 ordinance and you do not need to abide by the revisions that are being made with the changes. Back in 2001, 2002, the city had the option to put properties on the exempt list at that time as well. The city of Batavia does not have any properties there. Any of the other communities I know, our neighbors in St. Charles, had a lot of properties on that list and we felt that there should be a sunset clause on some of those properties. So none of the exempted properties that were listed in 2002 are being carried forward unless they were brought to that particular municipality. For us, we had none. So it kind of made it a little bit easier. And this is something that we have to provide to Jody to present to her stormwater committee in June to be added to the ordinance as part of the ordinance, so the list is included when people look it up. So that's why I'm bringing it to you guys today because I have to have that to her in another week and a half, two weeks. So like I said, these are properties that staff, community development, engineering, public works have had multiple conversations with and have even submitted the plans moving forward and we felt that they met the requirements and satisfied that. So there was an application that Jody had sent and, let's see, here it is. So it just states the property name and address and then the reason for the exemption that they're seeking it is that either a stormwater plan application has been submitted and substantially approved by the community engineer or to contractual agreement specifically exempting the development from only the changes resulting from the June 1st revisions was entered into at least 15 days prior to the revision date of the ordinance. And so then they fill out the remainder of this form and on the bottom, we do need approval by city council and then this form gets submitted to Jody at the county. So there's a few properties that met the application that had already previously been approved and then we have a few developments that are in the process. So Kevin Drundle helped us draft up the agreement that is attached in here, giving those developers of that property X amount of time to submit a stormwater application and then X amount of time to construct it from a said date. And those do not need to go to the county, that's just on our file, but I wanted you guys to see what we were presenting to those particular business owners. So the list of property owners that we have been contacted by and are, and are currently working with are Catherine Court, which is John Pitts over on Main Street, Land Meyer Farm, which is the developers, MI Homes. And then over in the Fox Valley Industrial Park, we have 280 Bellevue or CAE Services, 100 to 300 Oswalt, Avenue Bond Drive, Bellevue, Beach Street. Those are just a bunch of the outlets out there. Then 1405 Beach Street, which was the lot that Rubicon bought out there, and One North Washington. So the resolution just, again, stating these properties so that we can show that we have the authority to sign off on the form for Jody. And then after the adoption, we'll be coming back and revising the subdivision code, which will have to go through plan commission, to make any modifications, to make it a little bit more strict than what we want. We already have some revisions that are current in there and our current ordinance from 2001 states that the new, any changes or modifications to the ordinance are gonna be updated just by reference and adopted. So we don't necessarily need to come back to fully adopt it, it will just be per our current ordinance regulations that we have. But I know we do wanna go look through there and make any additional adjustments to that that we find necessary. So I know it was kind of a broad statement as to, they won't have to meet any of the new requirements. So currently, the code states for stormwater, it's more based on a land use as opposed to a disturbance. So with the new ordinance, we are changing that. We've done, or the county had hired ERA consultants as their consultant to help with research and drafting the ordinance. So they did exhaustive measures, looking at all the collar counties around the metropolitan area to see what they use and that's how come they came up with this land square footage as opposed to the land use. So now we're going from single, you know, we're going from one or two single-family residences on three acres or more than 25,000 square feet, any commercial, non-residential site greater than one acre, to more just a development, a redevelopment that has 5,000 or more square foot of disturbance and then having a specific linear roadway project that are greater than an acre, as well as looking at instituting stormwater best management practices into a requirement of a majority of these developments. And some of them will be determined based on the city's past experience with any, if we've had any stormwater issues in those areas. So I guess that kind of summarizes it. Does anybody have any questions? I know.
Yeah, when we're developing the exempt list, did we give any consideration to the Avenue Motors and the Menards property?
We have.
We don't wanna exempt them?
No. There's some existing stormwater issues out there and that property needs to be looked at further. And we've worked with engineer, but we still don't find what they've submitted is adequate at this point. And they have chosen not to submit an overall subdivision plan, they've only given us a lot and an entrance. So that's not satisfactory enough. And that pond that's sitting on the right of way only supplies partial detention for Avenue Motors and the other half goes to the existing ACE and the rest of that strip center. So at the time, you know, if they decided to submit more information, then maybe that would've been put into consideration.
And just to clarify, it does not affect the Raising Cain development. We'll move forward as planned.
Tony?
Yep. How about the Water Tower Crossing? You know, the new habitat that we just approved last night. Is there any issues with that?
No, 'cause it's a smaller development and it's already included in the stormwater that's over there on Spuyler and Wilson.
Tony?
How does the city exemption for One North Washington, when it gets switched over to Shodeen and then back to us, does that have any effect?
It'll just be listed under the PIN and it'll have a description anyhow, so it's kind of runs with the land and we're the ones that administer it.
That was gonna be my question on the one for, on Beach Street, that was the Rubicons. That just stays with the land there, doesn't matter what they build on or anything, it would be exempt to the design that they had?
Right, as long, so that goes with the whole overall Fox Valley Industrial Park. Tim Ward and Frank Mares did an extensive upgrade to the stormwater system, got Army Corps permits, and that was from 2009 through 2011 or so. And so they have required treatment trains out there and all the basins. So as long as those developments, like the Rubicon site meets the overall development plan that was approved, like with impervious lot coverage, there should be no additional need for anything.
Anybody else?
If we don't grant the exemption, are any of these projects dead?
Um...
I mean, are the revisions that big that the...
I think that Land Meyer, so Land Meyer and Catherine Court, the ones that are on the top, are the two that have not received final approval of a stormwater report and then One North Washington is, that one, it'll be a very minor and pretty simple stormwater report because anything that is impervious gets to stay impervious unless there's a water problem. So since that whole site was pretty much impervious, there's not gonna be, there will not be enough increase in impervious to require detention. Land Meyer Farm, I'm not exactly sure, I didn't work through the calculations on that one.
It borders Flood Plain.
And a lot of their detention is already provided for them in McKee Tributary with that Braeburn Marsh project. Catherine Court possibly could be. That's kind of tucked away behind First and Pitts over there in Main Street.
So then that result would be they might have to lose a lot or two?
Possibly. But I haven't sat down to go through the calculations. The timeframe unfortunately has been very tight to get this from our last meeting to turning it around. So I pretty much was just getting the stuff out to those landowners to make sure that we met the dates for the county as opposed to not having them on the list.
Well, the only reason I ask is if the rules are being updated and we all agree they're good rules, if the impact is minimal and we're not gonna lose a development, if the developer's okay with abiding by the new rules, I don't see a reason to exempt them.
For that property, I'm not exactly sure if losing a lot would be a deal breaker or not. I know there's other extenuating circumstances with that property at the moment, so they're kind of on hold at this time, but they are definitely looking forward, or moving forward and we've just received a lot separate, or kind of a subdivision of that property to break it into three different parcels, the development and then the two individual property owners.
Do we know how that impacts future development, the revisions?
Like I said, some of them, they're not necessarily major and without looking at them on a case-by-case scenario, it's hard to tell. In my opinion, I believe some of this might be pushed out a little bit quicker than some of the information has been made available. I think it could be just something on the political end with the county. But there are gonna be worksheets that show you exactly what the old code was and how that now has been changed with the new code, whether detention is required or not. And a big portion of it is requiring stormwater management, BMPs, on the site. And I can speak from being at those meetings, that some of the municipalities did not necessarily agree with some of the requirements of these just because of staffing requirements and what is needed to actually keep track of them and making sure that they're in place. And we know that we've had some problems with the clay soil that's in northern Illinois, that it doesn't necessarily always work. So these opinions were voiced during the meetings. So again, it's up to the communities that is gonna be reviewing to see what's best suited for each individual site as well, with the option also for fee and lieu.
Carrie, do you have something?
Just to Dan Chanson's point, there's this dynamic between the development community and the county. The development community would like to make regulations looser, the county is deciding to make regulations tighter. So there's this, there's this give and take and some of it is, okay, if you already have rules today, we'll let you stay with those rules, or we're gonna make new people coming in the door have more strict rules. So to say that, well, you kinda say that across the board. To pick and choose then and say, well, even the new rules wouldn't bother you, so we're gonna put you on these rules, but we're not gonna put your neighbor on these rules. That's why they kind of did this exempt list. So if you've already fairly through the process, which these projects are, then they go on the exempt.
Okay. Now, what's the timeframe if they don't build or they don't move forward to when they have to meet the new rules?
So that, I had discussions with both Scott Buning and Kevin Drundle and fortunately, unfortunately, depending on what side of the table you sit on, we have to follow the annexation agreement because they were provided guidelines in that agreement for each parcel. So we can set a timeline as to when we feel we would like a stormwater report by, to show that they're kind of moving forward with the property, but ultimately it lies in that.
Any other questions? Comments? Care to make a motion on Resolution 19-61-R?
So moved.
Second?
Motion is second. Do a roll call.
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone, absent. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Salvati, absent. Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
And Meitzler?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. Ellen, can I add a quick comment since I'm up here? I'd just like to report that with all this rain that we've had, I am unaware of any major issues like we've had in the past. I drove down some of our, you know, problem areas down in Ward 1 and where I'd previously seen a lake in the middle of Clover and Larkspur during the heavy event, that was not evident there. I did not make it far out west to Millview and Allen. I know we've had multiple calls about residents with either sump issues or some pounding in their yard, but overall, we haven't had many calls at all. I can't speak for everyone because we've all kind of been, they've all been filtering in different ways, but I just wanna say that it was nice to not have the phone going off the hook that much. So looking forward to continuing this week starts Ward 1.
Let's just hope it's, we don't get any 100-year floods this year.
It all came already.
Right.
Let's hope.
I also like to say I appreciate that the engineering staff and the street staff, when we do have those events, they're out there monitoring the situation constantly in all of those areas of the city that we know are problem areas. I had an opportunity to ride along with Scott last week and it was interesting to see some of those situations and also situations where our staff have to, you know, physically make changes to that system on an ongoing basis to make sure that water flows from one area to another by, you know, picking up manhole cover and making a switch. So thanks to all of those people who are monitoring those situations for us and making sure that they prevent some bad things from happening.
We'll move on to project status.
There were just a few, believe it or not, that I didn't talk about last night. That was kind of a, quite a, quite a project list last night, but wanted to let everybody know, now that we have launched the Gateway Improvement Program, that letters were sent out last Friday to every single one of the property owners that lie within those zones to make them aware of the grants that they might be able to apply for, for improving both their facades and then also their hardscape and landscape that's associated with their properties. We are already receiving requests for the paperwork to make application for that program, so we're excited about that. I was also contacted by the Bicycle Commission today. They have produced seven different videos. They are very short in nature, but they are meant to educate the community on bicycle safety. And so May is Bicycle Month and along with that, we will be publicizing all of those videos, probably let one out every day or so, to promote that. And then I think this, when tomorrow was supposed to be Bike to Work Day, but because of the weather, they have changed that to Friday. So we are promoting a Bike to School Week here in the city of Batavia. And then just a reminder, people are doing a great job of clearing their yards and they wanna know when the brush pickup is. That's gonna be the week of May 13th on the east side and then also the week of May 20th on the west side. And that, you should have all of your brush out to the curb side by 7:00 a.m. on Monday of those weeks. And that's all I have unless you have any questions for me about particular projects.
Talk to them about Metronet?
Yes. Over the last couple of months, we started receiving complaints about the Metronet installation, whether it was damage to some other infrastructure that existed, electrical wire or in some cases gas lines, or that their vehicles are unmarked and so a resident has no idea whose truck that is that is working in their yard, nor do they know who to contact when problems arise. And they're unable to get answers when they're talking with the people who are doing the work themselves. And this is unacceptable. When we began this project, Metronet flew in from Indianapolis with some of the, you know, highest people in their, their corporate organization to assure us that they understood that these, the residents were their future customers and by no means did they want to alienate those future customers by causing problems. But when we noticed the problems a couple of months ago, Jeff Elbertson, who is the primary city contact with the people who are doing the work here, put them on notice and said, "We've noticed a change and we are gonna expect that you address these issues." Well, they've continued and now we are to the point where we are spending so much time addressing the complaints that are coming in that it's difficult to find the time, you know, we've got, they're also on the other hand, asking for new permits to do more work in the city. And so today, we gave Metronet notice that we are going to halt processing of the permits until they come in to meet with city staff and with their subcontractors. We want them to be in the room as well so that we can get this back on track. Because I'm sure that Metronet, these are their, hopefully, their, their future customers and I think they just aren't supervising the work closely enough. So we hope that with this upcoming meeting, and they've said that they will meet whenever we want, that we can get things back on track.
All the extra wire laying around and that's on the poles as well, there's all this extra wire, is that all Metronet?
Can you identify what areas, where it is? Because I'm happy to address that with them.
If I go down Prairie, Prairie, there's a lot of extra wire hanging on the poles and it's kind of looped up and I was wondering if that was Metronet?
I think so.
I think it is. Yeah. Because it's just sloppy. And I brought this up last summer when Metronet was coming through Prairie Trails in our subdivision and selling people TV services and you didn't get local channels.
Right.
And that was very upsetting and come to find out when people were complaining, some of these guys are contractors, they're going door-to-door, so they really don't work for Metronet or DirecTV and they're just jamming things down people's throats. And it took 45 to 60 days before people got the regular 2, 5, 7, and 9 and there was a lot of people upset. And I know there's quite a few people in our area that have already switched back to Comcast. So I'm just sure, it's just been sloppy.
Yeah.
I know, like in my neighborhood, Saturday they cut my cable off when they had installed to a house drop for Metronet, they cut my Comcast off. And today Comcast was out and I just stopped to talk to the installer that was out checking and laying a new cable for mine and he said, "They follow them around town and fix the things that they hit for, you know, Comcast." So, you know, I see that and then the other one that really bothers me is they dropped 1,000 feet of cable in somebody's front yard on Harrison Street and it's been there for three weeks.
Right.
You know, where they can't mow, they can't do anything in their yard because they've just unwound the cable that's over sidewalks, you know, I mean, we can't allow them to keep doing that. So whatever meeting we have to have, we have to have and get it straightened out. And I think part of it is too, is I don't think it's just one crew that's the subcontractor. I think it's...
Oh, no. They have multiple crews.
And that's where I don't think they have the oversight. They have about five crews, I think, in town right now. I mean, is there, is there any requirement? Because I know that's the one that has bothered some people that I've talked to. Is the white truck pulls up in front of their place to hook this up and the guy just has a yellow safety vest on or something and no identification on the truck, on the person or anything else.
That's wrong.
Doing the job.
Yeah, they should.
Yeah, we have brought that up to them before, at least twice that I know of for sure, that I have personally brought up to them, that the people that are doing the work should have identification both on their, on their vehicles and on their person.
Right. Even if they don't have a sign, then it has to be on...
We need to enforce that, but let's just say it, but enforce it, so they do it. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So when, when they're doing this, are they, my concern, I mean, obviously, is the safety of the residents, but it's also, you know, the safety of the residents with infrastructure. If they're hitting gas lines and they're hitting electric lines, I mean, there's a health factor there. Are they, are they calling Julie's?
Yes.
Yes.
Almost 200 today in some...
So if they're calling Julie's and they're still having utility strikes, is it just poor workmanship or is Julie mislocating?
They have five, six different crews in town and maybe not always the eight players, let's put it that way.
I mean, so that's, I mean, we should address that with them also, is that, hey, you need to get people who are operating this equipment, it's heavy-duty equipment, that they are licensed, they're, they're certified? I mean, they have to be certified to operate this, this equipment. I mean, they have to be certified to operate this, this equipment. So, we, we should really follow up on that perhaps, too. Not to burden you, Jeff, with more, but-
No.
You know, it's where you hit gas, that's where you see explosions, and so-
That's why we've stopped the permits. And because, and it's not only just stopped the permits, but it's because we are focused on, we thought, you know, our expectation is they're supervising the crews. Now, we realize, we've got to stop doing that, and we've got to start checking until this gets back on track.
How disappointing, I'll tell you.
They had, they had a pretty good, they had a guy that was working for them that was doing a real good job of following up on their, on their stuff, and he got reassigned about three or four months ago. And that's about when we started having some of the issues. He was really good about following up, you call him, he'd be on it right now, get it straightened out.
Yeah, it's not that they didn't make mistakes before, but they were always right on top of them to fix them, and that's changed now.
What, what percent of the city do they already have access to through permits? And if we halt permits, how much teeth does that have? Do they already have access to like 90% of the town, and we're only holding 10%?
They're, they're running out of areas, that's why they've been bugging us a lot about getting new areas opened up.
How much of this market is open to them currently?
Uh, they're probably, I think they're hoping to be finished with their installation in town by August or September. So, they're probably-
Seventy?
Sixty percent, 70% installed.
It's not insignificant, what's left.
Okay.
Well, as I indicated last night at the city council meeting, yesterday was kind of an interesting day here, because it was kind of like complaint day in my office. It started out with this, and they were specifically up on North Avenue, Van Ortrick, Carriage Drive, Black Hawk.
Yep.
And they were out there, and the complaint I had was, is that there was no signs on any of the trucks, nobody knew for sure what these people were doing and what they weren't doing. And when they had tried to engage some of these folks in conversation, there was a language issue that raised its head. And so, they were having a very difficult time communicating with who these people are, and why won't they identify themselves, and, and that good stuff. I would tell you that, you know, another place that it seems to have had a real bad run with Metronet is South Forest Avenue and the area around Marshall Court. And there's a real dynamic change in topography levels as you go down that street, and it goes down to the creek on the west, and as it goes, it goes up a little bit as it goes toward the area there along Redant Road. And I don't know, that, there was something about that topography that allowed them to hit a whole bunch of stuff and damaged several house electric services, and-
Yeah, they had a gas main up there. I was up there and met with two or three of the residents on that block-
Right.
-in December, I think. November, late November, December, they hit a gas, a gas service up there.
I was up there yesterday, driving around after I got all the calls, and I mean, there's obviously some areas on Marshall Court that have yet to even been repaired, it's bare ground, or the wire's still laying there, or whatever have you.
Yep.
And then, I was told yesterday, we had a, one of the people who had been hit previously got hit again.
Yeah.
And so, there's just a lot of things happening, and I don't know, I've never quite seen one quite like this. So, you know, trying, I was out again this morning, running around over there and looking, and I still, I saw one truck that said, "Under contract to Metronet," but it was a kind of a wannabe sign, it was half-fallen off the truck. So, there's not a good effort, and as Jeff has, I think, aptly pointed out, we, we did have a fairly decent run going there with people who were communicating and were talking to the neighbors and whatever. For whatever reason, I think those folks got moved over to a new account someplace. And as I've shared with the staff, I, you know, I go into Chicago with some regularity, and I'm in there with a number of my fellow peers, and I'm being asked now about, because they're hearing that this company is here, and what kind of an experience are we having with them? And so, I'm kind of dumbfounded as far as trying to give an answer. Let me just put it that way. The other thing I wanted to share with you is, yesterday, the complaints weren't necessarily restricted to Metronet. I had a guy come down, and he had a bunch of these bags in his hand. And this is the, the guys that go out and want to reseal your driveways, and they lay, throw these bags at your, at your driveway that got rocks in them, and with their advertisement and age. So, I had a gentleman come in and want us to pass an ordinance prohibiting these holes. I'll share that with you, just because I did. I had another call from some folks down in the second ward, and they're quite incensed over the fact that there's an, what was being described to me is an ATV course, where people are running around on four-wheel vehicles down there, without license plates on. And I indicated, asked them, I said, "Well, they seem to be wanting to do this on private property." And talking with Scott this afternoon, I think we, we have some reservations about us going onto private property and trying to restrict somebody's ability to run an ATV, let buying their kid an ATV and running around the private property. So, I don't know, I don't know if there's a lot we can do, but I would forewarn you that there isn't. Most interestingly, I've had several calls here, and then when I go to Chicago, I hear this same thing, is there's a lot of, I'll call it legal curiosity about skateboards. And the question becomes, are there insurance on these people that are running around town on skateboards? Because apparently, there's been some mishaps in other communities where people are coming out of stores, and here comes somebody on a skateboard, and they get hit by the skateboard and break a hip or something. And I understand there may be some lawsuits in the making. And the question is, if, if you've allowed somebody from your family to ride around town on a skateboard, do you have insurance on that person? And I think the answer, from what I gather, is sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't, depending on the insurance policy. So, I don't know where that one goes, but I would just suggest to you that that may be a question that you may be getting, because we do have some people that like to speed around town on skateboards. And if they're not insured by family health or, or family insurance policy, that could be, I would think, very problematic for somebody if their son or daughter goes out and hits somebody on a skateboard and causes personal injury. So, I'm just sharing that for general public edification, that's something that I would encourage anybody that's got a skateboarder, and they're under their roof, that maybe they want to check into that and see what the insurance potential is. Does your homeowner's policy, and I told, some do and some don't, cover your person with insurance? Because it, apparently, it's an issue that's starting to raise its head in other places. And so, I just wanted to share that with you as a point of conversation, that that's another one of the, kind of the local things that get under people's burr in their saddles as to why they want to come down to the city. And, you know, as I was told when I first came here, you're at the, you're at the level of government that's closest to the people. And they can find us in the church, or at the grocery store, or in the gas station, or at McDonald's, or Target, or wherever they, they want to find you. They can find you here, and they can get right in your face and grab you by the hand and tell you what they think and don't like or like, and whatever, and that's good. And as has been pointed out, you know, when you go up the ladder, and you become a state representative, or a senator, or a congressman, you know, you get to meet some people, but you don't get this real personal chance to get in your face on a regular basis. And specifically, if you're sitting here as an alderman, you really do have your, as I think all of you know, you really do have the chance of them coming on your doorstep, or calling you on the phone, or emailing you, or whatever, and letting you know their high opinions on what's going on. And I would encourage you to at least listen to what everybody has to say, because, you know, that's their, you're the, you're the government that's closest to them.
Unless they're asking for a stop sign.
Yeah. Right. I mean, whatever. I mean, that's, that's the type of thing that, that you constantly get. So, for those of you who are new here at the table, I would encourage you to be aware that that's all part of the deal here, and you're going to be, probably have your fair share of contacts by constituents or people you know in town and say, "Well, gee, you're on the city council, why can't you get me a stop sign? Or why can't you get me a new street light? Or why can't you get my neighbors to turn down their bright lights in their house? Or why can't you get my neighbor's kid to turn off his loud music? Or why can't you get my neighbor to repaint his, front of his house?" I mean, there's an endless list of these, and I've, I've heard them all. And, you know, they all make some sense, they have, it speaks well to people's desires to see the community appearing nice and functioning and working nice. And so, we're the ones that are right there on the street with them. So, we need to know, understand that. We got a great staff here, and I think when they talk to Laura, and she talks to the other department heads, we got a lot of things corrected and changed for the better, but it's a process, and some of it may take a little time. ATVs and-
Rocks.
Bags and the rocks in the driveway, and-
What chapter of the book is, just covers that?
Those are the new topics of the week.
So, can I just address Metronet one last time, though?
Yes.
I, I just, thinking here, the, the concern, I mean, we always get told how, you know, like the elderly, we have enough, a number of elderly in our town, how the elderly are sometimes, you know, targeted through some sort of sham deals. I, I think we should probably, if, if at all possible, not to burden staff or burden our police department, but shut down this Metronet if they don't have bona fide signs. Just, as the mayor said, some, some falling off sign doesn't work, just because at least we know who these people, who they're representing. So, no one just in a, in a white van pulls up and asks access to the home of an elderly woman.
Right.
You know, I just think it's, it's, it's just kind of ripe right there for some sort of, you know, address onto people, you know?
Exactly.
So, I just, just some concerns.
I, I would just like to add on to the Metronet. I just looked up here, they are in Geneva, among others, Geneva, Montgomery, North Aurora, Oswego, Plainfield, South Elgin, St. Charles, Sugar Grove, Yorkville, you know, all local areas, and they're, you know, they're going gangbusters in this construction. I'm wondering if some of these other communities may have had this problem, they've, you know, been a squeaky wheel, and that's taken away some of the people that we had here when there wasn't problems.
Right.
So, I think it's very important that we, you know, we voice that-
Absolutely.
-we demand that, that be back to where it is.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost like they've bit off a little more than they can chew.
Yes. Right.
They are getting a huge amount of signups, from what I understand. What I've been told is that if you go out to the FedEx or UPS store, that they have shelves stacked with AT&amp;T and Comcast modems and, you know, boxes that are being shipped back because people are, are signing up with Metronet. That's what I, that's what I've been told, and that's been from an independent source. So, it sounds like they are getting a fair amount of signs, signups, from what I hear, but they need to step up and do things right.
To with, you know, find out through the franchise fee where who's going where. We can watch that. They will never give us the numbers, any of them will, but we can see it by the franchise fee payments.
You can guess.
You can't get the number.
No, you can, you can guess, though.
Well, you can guess, yeah. And the numbers overall will probably stay about the same, they just shift from one to another to figure out who's service is the best.
So, if, I have been, been asked this question, I think I know it, but I want to say it here so everybody hears it. If I switch my service to Metronet, can I then come home to my house and sit there and watch the TV program that's being broadcast right now?
Not as of yet. That contact and that switchover has not happened.
It depends. You can watch on BATV, right?
You could, well, you could watch on the website.
On the website, I mean.
You could watch on the webpage, you could watch it-
The YouTube channel, right?
On the YouTube.
You gotta have a computer to do this.
Right. Or a smart TV, you'd have to have-
So, if I was a television subscriber with-
Any other source.
I wouldn't be able to watch the council meeting, or the football game, or anything. I've been asked that.
Right. And it is something that we are following up on, you know, that's a point of contention right now with my BATV staff, that they have to get that done as soon as possible. Because as people transfer over, we still want them to be able to see all the things BATV has to offer.
Is there any reluctance by Metronet to let BATV on it?
I don't know if they have a rep in the local area that's government.
Well, maybe that's a point we need to discuss with them.
And that may be another great thing for you, while you're having contact with them, to make sure that we get that set up and done, because it's, it's simple, a couple pieces of hardware, a few connections.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Are we done with Metronet? Okay. Onto others. You have another, Marty?
Just along the lines of kind of what you were saying about the skateboards and stuff like that, it's another one that's somewhat related, is an e-bike, or a one-wheel, or motorized scooters. Are those motorized vehicles? Do they have to stop? Because they're different than bikes, obviously, all bikes have to stop, but if you just are downtown in Chicago, and you can see the proliferation of the one-wheels, those, and those haul, too. So, I would imagine as it starts becoming more popular, especially as we start to go into the summer, and I think it was precipitated, somebody had posted that they had one of the Saunders bikes. Is it Saunders?
Saunders.
The Saunders E, the e-bike?
I have an e-bike. I don't have that one.
No, okay. It's one of the ones from Kickstarter that-
If it's motorized, no matter what size it is, if it's registered as a vehicle, like I have a bike that has a motor on it, and it's registered as a cycle, then you have to apply by all the rules.
Well, and that's what I did on it. Is, is an e-bike.
Whether it's motorized or not motorized, if you are using it in the roadway, you must follow the rules of the road, because the cyclists have to follow the rules of the road when they are riding in the roadway. A motorized type of transportation would not be allowed on sidewalks.
And so, is a one-wheel a bike? Is it?
Is it motori, I don't know what a one-wheel is.
No, it's like, it's like a skateboard with a big one-wheel on it, and it's like a Flintstone car, you just ride it all.
Exactly what it looks like.
It's, it's, they're awesome looking, and they, and they, they're always just vroom, vroom. But I know other larger cities are having kind of some of the problems with the, the scooters that you just rent and kind of go like the, the Divvy bikes. I don't think we'll have anything like that, but motorized scooters probably will turn into kind of like what you're talking about, people getting any ATVs. And if there's more of these motorized vehicles, how are they considered? And I don't know. Because I think I got probably some of the same questions that you did. What are these? What if I get hit by one? And are they insured? Are they licensed? I'm like, I don't know.
Because I think that that's something that I think the county is actually talking about, because electric bikes and the motorized scooters on the bike paths, because that's going to be, going to end up being an issue. Because, one, they're a lot faster, and-
Yeah.
-they don't make any noise.
My understanding is they are not allowed at this point. Motorized vehicles are not allowed on our bike paths.
But does that include an electric bike?
But that doesn't stop them from going-
Right. I was going to say that doesn't-
If it has an electric motor, that would be motorized.
Right.
So, unless it's Fred Flintstone power.
But honestly, unless you're looking, there's a few of the electric bikes out there that you can't tell, aren't we?
Exactly.
I think that'll be interesting.
It will be.
I do have one other for tonight. We need to discuss our committee assignments as far as chairman positions for the committees that we do have.
Do you want me to run that up at the podium?
Sure, if you want to run that up there, then we can have that up there. Basically, it's the four standing committees that we have. One of the other things that I wanted to discuss, I don't know how far we'll get into it tonight, but the possibility of us having maybe a couple of smaller ad hoc committees, such as things to do with the executive session minutes, or other things that would be, I guess, dependent on big projects in town. I know when we did the bridge and some of the streetscape work, we had a smaller committee, a couple of people that were very readily available for smaller decisions, and to facilitate things so that we could get things ready in, in a form to get them to either committee or to council in a short timeframe. I think that that's something we might need to consider in some form or fashion moving forward. And do we want to stay with the four committee positions that we have, just to facilitate bringing things forward at a committee or the whole meeting, and at the council level? Because I don't know that I want to have everything on my shoulders every week. It's good to spread it out in that way, when people are here or not here, we have people to do it. So, there's the list.
Obviously, community development is leaderless at the moment.
As well as government services.
No. No.
Oh.
Government Services Drew.
Drew.
He was the vice-
Oh, okay.
He was the vice chair.
I, I would recommend Dan Chanzet for community development.
You want, do you want community development, Dan?
Would that mean I would be leading-
Would that mean I would be leading, just facilitating discussion?
Right.
I'm okay with that.
At committee, and then also presenting them at...
At council.
At the council level. So, for the new people, that would be what the position entails is, you know, at the committee level, making sure that you understand it or ask questions of staff that you would need to know to be able to present that to the committee of the whole. And then also, once it makes it out of the committee, to present them at the council level. Not that you guys have to jump in and find a chair or vice chair position, but just so you understand what we do, if you haven't seen what we do.
We do need vice chairs then.
Yeah.
On the off-chance that I'm not at a meeting or whatnot, I'd be curious if anyone, and are we doing it by seniority or doing it by interest or...
Both.
Both.
Those would be the first priorities as far as seniority and interest.
I'm not going to twist your arm, Marty, but I'd love it if you were interested in community development.
So, chairs and vice chairs, kind of what we want to figure out in that way at the next council meeting, we can codify all that and have it changed.
I think that's a good idea. We need, we need to have this...
Right, and it needs to be there and then it also needs to get transferred over to the website and...
We need to have a vote on it and get it in process. I mean, I guess my...
Do you want to propose a slate of who you would have filled that and then make the decision next Tuesday?
Historically, we do this by seniority.
Mm-hmm.
And so...
So, you're directing the mayor to make...
Well, I don't know, I'm not, I don't... I'm just, you guys agree who we want? Historically, these chairmanships have gone to those who have been here for a while and understand a little bit about how it all works.
Sure, I would just want to argue...
I was just going to ask, pose a question. I know you're one, I think Mike, yours, what, six years now?
Four years.
Four years?
Yeah.
Marty?
Six.
Six.
Drew's...
Nick is six.
So, you guys would be the natural ones, he's Public Utilities Chairman.
Okay.
Yours, City Services. And of course, I would hope that Alderman Wolf would be the new mayor pro tem because he's senior to the group here as Mayor Auburn Brown was. But Brown served as both mayor pro tem and committee chairman, so I would think you could stay as City Services.
I could stay on City Services.
Do you want to change committees or do you want to stay with City Services?
I don't know, I could go back. I was vice chair of community development before.
I was going to argue, you might actually do a very good job at community development. I'd be willing to switch. While I prefer utilities, I would take City Services over community development if you thought that was more appropriate.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, so what we just said was that Alan would be chair of community development?
Mm-hmm. Then we have, need...
Who would be the vice chair?
The vice chair.
On that stuff, I don't want to be the stick of the mud about it, but we do have codified what the rules are for it. We passed it three years ago. It sets out...
It's pre-me.
It talks about how it's going to be laid out. It's a law.
Okay, so I'll just look at that and let you know who's on...
It would be the senior most, your seniority first and then after seniority it...
There's a disqualifier in there for attendance.
For attendance.
Because it was, the discussion was previously all of the, the making sure that you're going to be here for it.
Well, and the other thing too was if there was, say, two aldermen that both had six or 10 years of seniority together, but one was here 75% of the time and the other one was here 80% of the time, 80% got the choice or got the...
I don't think that's in there.
Yeah, it's a tiebreaker.
I think it was a tiebreaker that that was...
Council gets to decide.
Then that...
If they can agree.
Okay. Well, then maybe we should look it up so that we don't...
Instead of...
Does anybody have the attendance sheets?
You know, I recall the, I recall the discussion, I don't recall the vote. So, I don't know.
I recall, I definitely recall the discussion. You and I might actually be, you and I might be out of it.
How about if I look into it and we'll have it on the agenda for next meeting?
I think that would be fine and then we can pick out how you want to do it. Are you going to take Government Services Chair? Would you like to take that? Okay.
Is that going to be according to the rules?
I think so.
Okay. Just sounds like it was...
And you've got a really good reading voice.
Seniority.
Really good.
This is what I've been waiting for, the consent agenda. We can't like the 17-item consent agenda.
We have a briefcase going on the consent.
And read it really slow.
Put everybody to sleep.
We'll just spray through them.
That's fair. Okay, then we'll get that together and then decide that at the next meeting.
I mean, I think that just where the four that are kind of in seniority would be Marty and Drew.
Two.
And over here would be Dan and Mike would be the next four.
Is your, are you six years?
Six years.
Six years.
Nick is six years.
Marty's six. And you're...
I'm 10.
Ten.
I actually have the list of when everybody came on.
Mike.
Yeah, there is a, there is a seniority list.
It's our...
Everybody would be a chairman or a vice chairman.
Contact list.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all of that on there.
That's what, you know, the way we had set it up with the seniority, I think the numbers that are here right now, there's just the right number for being chairman and vice chairman in the room.
Out of the seniority list.
Because that's where I'm not sure, when did Scott come in? There was that...
Twenty sixteen.
It's only been a couple of months before me.
Okay. Because I don't remember who came in. There was the flurry of...
I have another other.
He was just a couple of months before me.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have one more other?
One more other. I'd just like to report out on a meeting that I attended just prior to the committee of the whole meeting today. Britta McKenna, who I think most of you know, had a project that she did that was 50 cups of coffee with different citizens from all different walks of life, all different ages in our community, both people who are new to our community and some who have lived here for 80 years. And the questions that she asked over the course of about an hour, meeting with them over a cup of coffee, were the same questions that we went through when we did our SWOT analysis about Batavia. What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? Our opportunities and threats? And then she also focused on seniors in our community and asked some specific questions about what services that the community has, what services the community lacks and what people are looking forward to as they see themselves retiring here in Batavia. Also, just some open-ended questions about what are the biggest issues that are facing the community. And she actually met with 69 different people and accumulated a tremendous amount of data. And the meeting that she had was a report out to all of the people that she had met with. And in about 14 different slides, she went through what the top six answers were from all of the various members of the community. But she also offered to provide the data to everybody who participated in that program. And so, I've asked her for all of that data because I think it would be very interesting to try to put it in a format that would be something that would be very useful to the city council as we approach those objectives that we put into our strategic action plan and help inform about things that are important to people right now. So, I look forward to sharing that information with you.
I have one more other. I told a couple people I'd bring this up tonight because they've had some concerns. We have on Route 25 in Bond, as you go east on Bond, you have Bellevue and Oswald that kind of merge with Bond. There are quite a few people that go down Oswald and there are some trucks and there are occasionally some cars that go down Bellevue. There's no signs there, so it's just everybody's merging, or the few traffic that's there is merging onto Bond. And a couple people have told me there's been some close calls because people going onto Bond from Bellevue don't stop. And I'm just wondering, I know a stop sign is taboo, but maybe a yield sign or something because that one, there is a company there on Bellevue and the trucks do always come and from Dodge as well, Industries, they always go down Bellevue out to 25.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
That would be appreciated.
Anybody else?
Sir? Thank you for these books.
You're welcome.
I have a very old copy of it. I just flipped through it.
That's what I thought and I saw that since they came out with a 2019 version...
It has been updated.
Might have some new stuff in it.
There is some new stuff and I flipped through it. There are updated facts, especially regarding home rule and whatnot. And I would argue, as I had mentioned this before, I had covered municipal politics as a newspaper reporter before, so I came in, you know, hit the ground running a little bit. This book contains what I would argue is five years of city council experience. If you guys have a chance to flip through this, anything you could possibly want to know, I would, I would read this book. It's very, very good.
And the Illinois Municipal League does a great job of keeping us up to date on every piece of legislation that affects municipal government and, you know, every move that the State House makes with regard to that legislation. So, we really appreciate not only books like that, that are handbooks and guidebooks on various issues, but also the legislative support as well. So, we are apprised of every change we need to be.
This acted almost as a syllabus or a textbook for Mary's course over at...
Yes.
Well, Bonzi now, are they still doing that course?
No.
Is there...
Is there any substitute for it?
Someone like to join me and request that they revive it? That was a fantastic class. If there's a way to revive that, someone to facilitate that.
Yeah, we'll put in a good word for that.
The other bookend to this is the, I know you got Dave, the Roberts Rules, but Roberts Rules for Dummies is actually really good too.